Okay, I'm going to call to order our meeting again. We will begin with item F3, Review of the Expulsion Process. This is a topic that we asked Mr. Sumter to bring to the board so we could reconsider how we are doing things. So, Mr. Sumter?
Okay, very good. Yes, you're right. This is brought as a request of the board, and as you probably know, the expulsion process is governed by Education Code. And it is very basically, basically provides a specific guidance related to due process for expulsion hearings. So I'll attempt to outline that for you, you know, what that process is as clearly and concisely as possible, because there are nuances, of course, to every case. So, the essential procedure is as follows. When a student violates the behavior expectations at the school, an administrator at the school site will conduct an investigation to determine appropriate disciplinary action. If it is determined that an expellable offense has occurred, the student will be suspended and the parents are notified that a recommendation for expulsion is being made. The meeting is held with the parents or a conference is held with the parents over the phone to explain what the circumstances are behind that. The site administrator will then notify my office and provide a written summary of the incident, including information on the student's attendance, academic performance, and discipline history. At that point, I review that information and contact the investigating administrator if clarification is needed, and discuss if there may be appropriate alternatives to expulsion that are allowed or permitted through ed code. If it is determined that the Education Code and board policy supports a recommendation, a notice of hearing letter is sent to the family at least 10 days prior to the hearing date advising them that the recommendation for expulsion has been received by the district office. The notice of hearing also advises the parents and students of their rights related to the process, the date and time and location of the hearing, and also asks them to make an appointment to meet with me to discuss the process and their options, and to answer any questions they might have. The hearing is scheduled to be held within 30 days of the incident for which the expulsion is being recommended unless the student's or parent requests in writing for a postponement. The pupil is entitled to a postponement of a hearing not to exceed 30 calendar days. At the hearing, opportunity is given for the student or parent and the school administrator to present information, witnesses, and evidence to be considered by the administrative panel when making their decision. The administrative panel has the opportunity to ask clarifying questions of the student and family and the school's representative and any witnesses presented. When presentations and questioning is complete, the hearing is closed, and the panel has up to three days to render their decision and send their recommendation to you, the board, for final action. And the families are then notified of the decision of the board, and they have the right to appeal the governing board's decision to the County Board of Education. And at that point, the county takes over the process of the appeal and notifications from there. That, in a nutshell, is the process. Again, it does take some twists and turns along the way at times, but that's the basic process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sumter. I think when we originally asked for this item to be brought to the board, we had some specific questions. So, do board members want to address any of those, or Ms. Lamone?
Thank you, Mr. Sumter. One of the specific questions that I had, or issues that I'd just like to address, I don't know if it's a question, but was thinking about inconsistencies in what comes to the board for a decision. For example, two strikes versus three strikes. Our board policy says one thing, sometimes we see that different things is what comes to the board, and for me, something where the board policy says it's three strikes, but something comes to us that's two strikes is not fair to the school, to the student, to the parents. And so, that was one thing that I wanted us to address, either by thinking of what changes we need to make, maybe at the administrative level, or if perhaps it was an issue of revisiting the policy itself, to articulate some better or clearer understanding of what we're supposed to do.
Well, that exact thought was brought to me when I first came to the district, because in the guidelines, in the discipline guidelines that are produced for site administrators to follow, that two strikes versus three strikes issue is a little confusing to them, only in the sense that on strike two, it does have some provision for some discretion in terms of what are the details around the circumstances of that particular incident. So there is some leeway for a third strike, and the ed code says, and it depends on certain elements of the incident, but possession of a controlled substance on a first strike is not an expellable offense unless it was furnished or sold to another student, but or if it was more than an ounce of marijuana. So, that then moves it to a second strike where that provision is made for the alternate third strike if there's certain conditions that exist related to student participating in counseling after the first strike or not, if they did not take advantage of that opportunity to do so.
Right. And so, I guess for me, even in hearing this information and thinking back, it's still inconsistent as far as what's being recommended to the board.
Well, you will have received, and you have received different or variations of those recommendations because of that allowance that's been provided there in that second offense. And it's my understanding that was in place before I came on, and my understanding is that is something that was established by the board for site administrators to use.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
I'll just follow up on that, because that would be a question of us talking about the policy again. And we actually are, our school resource officers that are at Galleta Valley dos Pueblos and San Marcos think that that change, the shift from two strikes to three strikes in general, was one of the worst decisions that the board made, and has had a terrible effect on the schools. So, it's, it would be, I think it's important to have, to go back to that policy and take a look at it and hear both sides, good and bad, because I was, when we heard that at one of the youth violence committee meetings, I was so surprised, because at the board level, we don't see that at all. And, you know, we haven't seen an increase, like a rebound increase in expulsions, which is something that I had expected to have happen. So I was not aware of the law enforcement perspective of what's going on on our campuses because of that policy change. So, that's something that I would like us to talk about, just to hear both sides of it. I wanted to also comment, because as much as we have issues and we make really hard decisions and painful decisions in the expulsion process, one of the things that I've been following over the past year has been some of the expulsion processes in other districts and in other states in particular. And particularly, there's been a lot of news out of Virginia and Maryland around their expulsion processes that have led to student suicides, it's expulsions and involuntary transfers, and just months and months and months of students being out of school. And as bad as I feel sometimes about the things that we do, I feel like California is much more merciful and thoughtful in its laws and in our own policies around those than things that I see in other states that just are terrifying. But I do think it's something that we have to keep looking at, because things change.
Yes, they do.
So I think it's important for us to look at these policies.
Ms. Deacon?
Thank you. I, one of the things that I felt came out of some of our discussions that prompted this agenda item was a need to understand the effectiveness of some of the sanctions that come along with expulsion. And we were hoping perhaps to ask you to direct some kind of checklist about the various interventions, whether expelled students, you know, do they re-enter our system, kind of rehabilitated along those particular variables? We ask for things like community service hours, teen court, quite often related to suspended expulsions, but I think as a board, we wanted to know, you know, what is teen, what does the teen court process really give to the student? Is it really beneficial? Does it really contribute to what we're hoping that they'll come back to as a student of ours? And community service hours, I think we wanted to know why they couldn't be performed during the summer. There were some questions about that. So, if there'd be a way to get just kind of a listing of the variety of things that we require students to do to go to some of the counseling, and then look at the effectiveness of maybe tracking some of the expelled students, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Sure. I can tell you that in terms of teen court, it's kind of customized by the folks that run the teen court program to whatever the infraction was, so for the student to be responsible to take part in activities that are related to, so to speak, what they were expelled for.
That's good. And if we could just get some examples of that, that would help us when we guide our decisions. Thank you.
And I had some questions, several questions, not so much about the expulsion process itself, but the ancillary issues that go along with it, such as interim instruction, which I have real concerns that when, that the process can take several months from the time a student is suspended to the time their case is adjudicated by the board. And in that time, the student often receives what I consider very minimal instruction in terms of the amount of time per day that they are expected to be receiving instruction from our, from our district staff. And so, that concerns me a great deal. I feel like we do the students a disservice, because very often, the students who are getting into trouble already are behind in units, and then they are getting more behind as they await the outcome of their case. So that's one issue that I have, or one concern that I have. Another concern that I have is, do, when we talked about the, the moving from two strikes to three strikes, and as, if people probably recall, that the principals were opposed to that when we did it. But the intent was that there would be a great deal more intervention with the students at the two-strike point, rather than simply saying, well, you get an extra strike. There was supposed to be intervention to keep the student from moving to the third strike, and keep the student from moving to the expulsion. This was an attempt to reduce the number of expulsions from our, among our students. So I would also like to know, to, you know, what we are doing to actually create those kinds of interventions that were anticipated when we made that change. A third concern that I have is that, as with a lot of things that are, you know, being subject to funding cuts, El Puente, I know, is feeling the strain of budgets as well. There's questions about how much longer they will actually be able to continue, and at what level they will be able to continue. If, if they have to significantly reduce their, their services, that will have a great, a significant impact on us and on our expelled students. So I'm also, would like us to be involved with what's happening with them, and to perhaps have a contingency plan for what we will do with our students who face expulsion, if and when there is a need for them to cut their services. And then finally, just a, basically an echo of what some, of what other people said, I would love to see us track our expelled students, see how many of them return to our district, and how many of those students graduate once they do return, so that we can see whether our expulsion steps are actually leading to success, or leading to further disenfranchisement of the students, or disengagement of the students. Mr. Herron?
Just to follow up with Mrs. Cordero, intervention, I mean, anything we can do to keep them in school. Expulsion should not, that should be the last, last resort. But what I see is consistency, or lack of consistency. Now that we have, you know, two brand-new principals in one, in the high school level, and one fairly new, to me, it's a great time to talk about consistency with them, because I think we had some hardcore principals that, you know, I think we need to be a little bit more consistent and get those three together, so that they're all reacting to the difference between two and three the same. They have intervention programs that are working, sharing ideas, and this would be a great time to do that with the, with the new crew and a new superintendent, that maybe we can avoid the prison, or student, what is it, something, prison pipeline, you know, you know, school to prison pipeline. And that's not a joke, because that, there are now articles all over the United States complaining about that. And I think we need to be cognizant of it, and that's not our goal in any way, shape, or form. We want to keep our students in school. And so, if we can get the principals to sort of understand the difference between two and three strikes and act accordingly with every effort possible to intervene, to make sure they don't get to that third strike.
If I can respond to each of those, I was writing some notes here.
Thank you. I know we, we gave you a lot to think about.
In terms of IHI and your comment about falling further behind, I haven't officially tracked it closely, but my impression is that the students actually make up credits many times when they're in IHI. Possibly because it is somewhat self-directed, they are able to work faster pace, that sort of thing. Not every student, but I do see some of that. So maybe, that may be something, you know, interesting to look into a little deeper and maybe get some more data on that. In terms of the two strikes versus three strikes, without going into too much research on it, I have, I have not seen another district that uses a three-strike policy. Any districts that I have been part of, it is a two-strike policy. You know, and that is, of course, obviously, a board's decision, but the interventions that take place include things like individual counseling and family counseling, as well as referral to the super program that we've had in place. And, I mean, you can make those offers and try to hold them accountable to it, but they have to go. If they don't, then that's, I think that's where the site administrators have taken that option of enforcing the expulsion recommendation on that second strike, if they don't take advantage of that opportunity to begin with. The status of El Puente, I have been in communication with Fred Razzo regarding that. There is some changes taking place. They have spread themselves out a little bit more in terms of providing locations around the area to get more community-based sites for people that may be needing to travel a long ways to get to the location here in Santa Barbara, on, in this area over here of town. So they're trying to address that need for families who just can't get the connection very well to come here. So those are some of the changes they're doing right now. There is some financial issues going on that you mentioned, of course, that they're trying to address as well. And they're a little uncertain where that's going to go at this point, too. As far as the tracking expelled students returns, those that return and graduate, that is something that, you know, we'll put some effort into and see if we can't come back with some numbers for you on that, too. Consistency, I do have monthly meetings with the assistant principals, pretty much all the ones that do handle discipline, are related to these kinds of things. So one of the goals of those meetings and the discussions in those meetings is to create consistency in all aspects of discipline, not just the expulsion processes and recommendations. Although the expulsion recommendation ultimately is the principal's recommendation, it is that AP that does all the investigation and the report writing and stuff, so I think they're, they're the ones that are right there on the front line of that process, so I communicate pretty regularly with them on that, to try and create as much consistency as we can. It can be difficult at times with the different personalities involved, but it is something we try to do. I think I hit most of the topics that were brought up.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? I think we've given you a lot to respond to, and we appreciate your patience. We look forward to, you know, getting some of that information back from you, and we'll continue to grapple with this as we work with hopefully reducing our number of expulsions.
And I just have a clarification. Are we going to revisit the policy? Are we waiting for information? I'm just, I want to know what we decided to do.
I didn't hear a consensus or general direction, but I know, Ms. Parker, was it your desire to revisit the policy?
Yes, I think that we need to take a look at, I don't want to look at the entire, because this is exhibit, is it 5144?
Yes.
It's, so I don't want to look at the entire exhibit, but I think just looking at the two-strikes, three-strikes piece, I think we've had it in place for about three years now, and it would be great to get site feedback and have a discussion for, for ourselves. So.
Okay. So we have a request to bring that back. Thank you.
Will do.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Sumter. Okay, board members, we, we are now going to move forward to item F4, Discussion of Breakfast in the Classroom. And, Mr. Smith, were you going to introduce this item?
Yeah, I'll introduce it, and then our Director of Child Nutrition is here to probably expand on what I'm going to say. Breakfast in the classroom is not a new idea. Actually, when I was the Assistant Super Business in Paso Robles 15 years ago, we had it there. As you know, breakfast is the most important meal of the day, and breakfast in the classroom is one means of delivering that in a way that can be delivered to all children. Obviously, the nutritional content of breakfast in the classroom is readily apparent, but also its impact on student attendance and academic achievement is both well documented. We recognize that breakfast in the classroom is a negotiable item, and we'd have to negotiate it with the SBTA. However, we believe there's a significant monetary incentive that hopefully would allow us to achieve some kind of a...
Balance.
There we go. Happy medium. And so, I'm going to let Nancy talk about what we know about breakfast in the classroom, how we would implement it, and without further ado, Nancy?
Thank you. It's good to be here. Thank you for listening. This program is definitely win-win for not only and formerly the students that are going to be receiving breakfast in the classroom, but also our district. It's such a sustainable program, when you think about it, the impact is so little in the classroom, and yet the benefit is so great. As, as Eric Smith said, breakfast is an important part of the meal program, and it's underutilized in our district because it's voluntary. And it's, it's a time-constrained issue, I think, I believe, with most of our parents running around trying to get multiple kids to multiple schools, and then getting off to multiple jobs, it's very difficult to manage breakfast. And I feel that as a director of a food service program, that if we were able to deliver breakfast, like we do lunch, it could really see some powerful impact on the kids and their test scores, on, on their attendance, in terms of them wanting to come to whatever class we are seeing them eat, if it's going to be first period or second period, if it's about taking attendance and giving a short lesson. Jack O'Connell has said that this is part of the instructional minutes for the day, so it's not as if we're cutting into anything seriously. I think that if, if kids were grouped together, we could create community, classroom sensibility where, where there, there's food, where there's either a math lesson or a language lesson, or a science lesson. But the bottom line is, we could bolster our district's bottom line and turn it back to the teachers. I know that this is an issue for teachers. I know that they're worried about instructional minutes, which apparently is not an issue anymore. Then they're worried about perhaps how to facilitate breakfast, and I visited Santa, San Diego Unified, they're doing an exceptional job with breakfast in the classroom. You, you can elevate the kids that are in the upper grades in elementary school to actually participate in lessons in dependability and, and responsibility, and showing up every day, and carting your breakfast to each of the individual sites. Custodians have been involved in participating as well. There doesn't seem to be a whole lot of vermin issue or mess associated. There is an issue with scratch cooking and the delivery system, and how we're going to package this food, but we're already doing that. For instance, at McKinley, we're, we're serving later breakfast, and we, we do need to package that food, but we, we have the ability to package a bagel sandwich in a plastic bag and deliver it to the classroom with a half pint of milk and a whole piece of fruit, and that's a reimbursable breakfast. And that's going to bring our department $1.98 for every child that eats that's on the free lunch program. If we, if we, I, if you notice, the, the calculation, the worksheet that I gave you is corrected, because I was calculating, thank you, Mr. Herron, I was calculating on the entire district, or half of the entire district. We're, we're serving, our, our participation is, is only half of what we're actually able to serve. We have 15,000 kids going to school every day, we're serving a third of them. If we were to only serve a half of them, we would realize an $800,000 net revenue. And that money would go directly back into our district and where it's needed. If it's needed for art, or, or physical education, or science, or health, or retaining teachers in their classrooms, if it's needed to bolster the Department of Food Service, to continue to serve organic food that's locally grown, it seems to me that it's a very viable way of engaging kids, engaging teachers, in something that is so important right now, which is feeding yourselves, healthy food, so that you're healthy, so that you can learn better, so that you don't become sick later on, so that you can't continue being productive and educating yourself and becoming productive citizens. So, I like the idea of breakfast in the classroom, and I'm sure there's a lot of questions, or maybe not.
I think we have some public comment on this item, so we'll take our public comment, and then we'll address any questions that we have to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lane Wheeler, followed by Leslie Sanderson.
Lane Wheeler, President of Santa Barbara Teachers Association. Santa Barbara Teachers Association supports the concept of healthy students and well-nourished students in teaching those students. This program, however, doesn't honor the contribution and the preparation that teachers do each morning. There are a number of staffs that have a staff meeting in the morning, there are a number of collegial, collegial meetings that take place, there are a number of duties that teachers have assigned. There is also the entire gamut of the certificated unit, so some teachers are going to be asked to serve breakfast while their teachers or certificated unit members would not be asked to do that. So there's a number of issues here. We still have concerns about vermin in the classroom, we still have concerns about health issues, and the ability for parents to meet, come in and meet with teachers. I taught first grade. I know that parents come in and want to teach, talk to you in the morning. We are very concerned about instructional minutes. We don't seem to have any forgiveness when it comes to API and AYP scores, and yet we're being asked to do more and more. I heard that we're now being asked to take one of the primary roles of parenting, providing food for your children, whether it be the mother bird or the family unit. I'm not really sure that that would fall into the bailiwick of, of the instructional day. So there's a number of concerns and questions that need to be addressed. I think they also include contractual issues that might include the fact that there's serves, food service workers now in the classified unit, that we would be doing the exact type of work that they are now doing, so we would have some contract issues there. And while it was very palatable to hear that the money might be able to be negotiated, I would like to call to your attention that there was a $100,000 increase to the general fund for health and welfare benefits. Teachers are now spending about $400 or $500 a month to provide basic health and welfare benefits for themselves or their families, and our catastrophic program... And our catastrophic program now costs $300 or $400 a month. So if we're talking about asking teachers to do more, we would certainly wanna talk about how they'd be compensated. During the tough times, we realize that...
Thirty seconds.
We have not, the last four years, asked for any increase in wages. And now with another $800,000, which may be a pie-in-the-sky number, or maybe a breakfast-lunch number, we would like to certainly have that be part of our conversation. So we would be more than willing to participate in any conversations, but we believe there are a number of issues that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Sanderson.
I actually really like the idea of breakfast in the classroom because that would be one less thing for me to have to do in the morning. Although my son does eat at 5:30, so my guess is that he would eat at 5:30 and he'd eat a second breakfast when he went to school. But aside from the issues of it being a great idea, I'm at the risk of being a broken record. What are we gonna do about the kids on special diets? Are the teachers going to be dosing the insulin in the classroom, checking the blood sugar? We're talking a fruit and milk, a bagel sandwich. We're talking 50 grams of carbohydrate. It could be a math exercise. Each of the kids could, you know, they're on a one unit of insulin to 10 grams of carbohydrate ratio. That's five units of insulin. They could draw it up, give it to the class. Wait a minute. We don't have the carbohydrate content for meals, either breakfast or lunch. So we'd be winging it for breakfast and lunch, winging it for two meals a day, instead of just for one meal a day. We have a new floating LVM. Maybe it's not gonna be just the people participating in school lunch. It'll be all the children who have diabetes. Are we gonna teach the teachers how to dose insulin? Are we gonna teach the teachers to use emergency glucagon kits when they overdose the insulin and the kid ends up comatose on the floor? Are we gonna teach the teachers how to use EpiPens when a child with a food allergy picks up milk and they're allergic to milk and stop breathing? So just as an aside, you know, if we are going to go this direction, which I think is a good idea, there's still some things to work out, especially for kids who are on special diets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Board members, do we have questions and/or comments on this item? Ms. Parker?
I have some questions for Ms. Weiss. First of all, your worksheet talks about Santa Barbara's elementary schools. Would this include La Cumbra? Since La Cumbra already does breakfast for all?
The academy. It would include...
The academy, but not the junior high?
No, not the junior high.
And why would that be?
No, it would. If we can go forward, we would, but this number does not. No, this does not.
Would that be the only junior high that qualifies, or that you would be able to do this with?
No, we could do this across the board. We could do this... If we had everyone fill out an application for the free lunch program, we could most certainly justify breakfast in the classroom, K through 12.
I see. So the schools that are currently getting free lunch...
Provisioned. Okay, that's for all students. We're talking about provision breakfast in all but OAS...
Right.
Yes. Breakfast.
But this would expand... I guess my question is, are the students that don't qualify for free and reduced, are they gonna be paying for breakfast?
No, no. We would be feeding them breakfast because we still get a certain reimbursement from them. Plus, because we're feeding so many other kids that would normally not be feeding, we're getting a reimbursement that's higher than the expense of feeding the entire population.
So you think that if the district were more assertive about getting more students to fill out the free and reduced lunch application, that more schools would qualify for what's going on currently?
Yes. And we're talking about two separate things. If we were to get every student in the entire school district to fill out an application, what that would do is enable every, for instance, high school to get an economic snapshot of where they are, number one, and they would probably find that those same kids that were in elementary school that qualified for the free lunch program, that matriculated on, are still qualifying. And yet, because of either shame, or laziness, or they can go off campus, they don't apply. And when they don't apply, then they lose their right to eat for free, or for a reduced fee, and we lose the reimbursement. So if we were to manage our national school lunch program in a different light, if we were to actually present it to all families in high schools as if this is helping your high school get Title I monies, or any other funding that's available for low income, then we could deliver breakfast in the classroom justifiably without the fear of losing money. But even if we didn't have those kids fill out applications, we would still be getting a reimbursement on those kids.
Okay. Is breakfast being served in the classroom anywhere currently? I mean, I know that zero period at La Cumbra is...
Yes, that's the only place.
That's the only place. Have there been any issues with it in zero period in La Cumbra?
None. No, it's been really, really smooth, really successful. We have insulated bags for hot and cold food. Kids come by, they pick it up, they deliver it.
In your site visitation, and I guess in any other research that you've done, what were some of the other cons that came up? I mean, we see all the pros, but were there any other difficulties?
Well, trash pickup. I mean, you definitely need to follow through. And we're composting in all of our elementary schools. So we would have the green, the yellow bins being utilized more. We'd probably need more pickup for that kind of volume that's going on. But if custodians are on board, if the... And they don't need to be on board, because we do have inherent workforce in the food service staff that can, if need be, we could actually provide delivery service to all the high schools. I mean, to all the classrooms.
Classrooms.
Yes. And trash is just a matter of getting a yellow can into each classroom, which they should have anyway because there's a lot of food consumption going on, or trash coming into classrooms that could be assorted into one of three cans.
Well, and I don't know if you've researched to this extent or not, but one of the things I would like to know is, in districts in California that have implemented this, have the bargaining units been happy with it?
Yes.
Has it worked out?
Well, San Diego Unified, yes. It's been successful there. Sanger Unified, Richland Elementary and Wood Lake, which are in Kern County. Yes, those folks are really happy with the program. They've seen a solid increase in reimbursement. It's paying for itself, and then some. So there's a surplus of revenue available to not only the Department of Food Services in those districts, but also to the general fund and to the...
Well, there is... I mean, it's nice looking at the revenue piece, but I think that probably all of us are gonna be thinking about what's best for the students and making sure, since there is such need in our district.
I think that's the bottom line. I think that it's not the money, per se, but the money is certainly a motivator. But the bottom line is, we know that test scores are increased when kids get constant nutrition. I find it very frustrating when star testing comes about, and all of the secondaries in elementary as well. But I find it very confusing that they only contact us for snacks for star testing, as if we're gonna, you know, feed the children that aren't used to eating breakfast, and somehow that's gonna impact their test scores, when I actually think that inconsistent feeding, and then a dose of really good food, is gonna crash them because they're not used to burning that kind of nutrition on a daily basis. So kids are getting bagels, cream cheese, you know, fruit, yogurt, granola during star testing that one week, and it's crazy. I mean, our numbers shoot up. We make more breakfast per day during that one week than we do consistently the rest of the year. And it's only because, and it's offensive, that it's because we're testing that we're feeding the kids. That's not how it should be. We should consistently be feeding the kids every single day, and not just elementary kids, but everybody. And it should be delivered, if that's possible, so that everybody is included and not segregated, and not eating breakfast in their car on the way to work because it's a Starbucks breakfast muffin. Instead, it's everybody gets a Santa Barbara High breakfast muffin, and they're feeling good about it because it's not only good, but it's also fueling them, sustaining them until lunch. What can I say?
Thank you. And I just wanna finish up by saying that I really do think that this is worthwhile to pursue. So thank you.
I do understand that there's a lot contained in the program, and a lot that needs to be worked out.
Ms. Deacon?
Thank you. I think the benefits are clear. My main concerns are about the implementation, and I think those have already been raised. How long will it take? I mean, how many instructional minutes are we talking about when we're talking about students eating in the classroom?
Honestly, probably 15 minutes. If we're on target, we're delivering before the period. So if it's first period, the food is already there. The teacher already has a stash of forks and napkins that are in baskets that are just brought out. It'll change the atmosphere for that period. I mean, there's no doubt about it. It's like a meal at your dining room table. When you eat together, there's fellowship, and there's...
I get that part.
So I think it's 15 minutes tops. 15 minutes tops.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you have staff that could actually disseminate all this food at a site so that it arrives at all the classrooms before school starts? And I'm also concerned about the trash pickup because I know there are trash receptacles in the classrooms, but the volume of trash is going to increase. Our custodians are already, you know, pressed.
This would be a part of their custodial duty, as far as I can see.
And would that increase... I think we need to ask, will that increase their workload? I mean, if there's more volume, more time spent?
It might.
Okay. And I'm just trying to think ahead to all the pieces.
Sure, no, 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 I understand.
The health concerns, I think, are valid. I mean...
I also think we need to involve student assistance and actually employ, to a certain extent, kids in the process so that they can actually learn about community service and how it is to show up on time, and that they have a deadline, and they deliver, and they have a sense of pride in what they've accomplished, and...
Sure. And I understand all those benefits. But like I said, I'm just worried a little bit about the implementation piece and that we have to have that dialed in before we start this.
I am too.
Because I don't wanna ask our teachers to be cleaning up spilled milk. I mean, you know, I don't want them to be spending a lot of time away from their instructional piece, and...
That's part of the instructional piece, though. I have to say that even sitting in a classroom at your desk and eating civilized food in fellowship means you clean up your spill, and that as part of the educational process, you instruct that you don't just leave it, you clean it.
Oh, no, I don't think it'll be left. I'm just a little worried about who's gonna clean it up.
I think the kids should clean it up.
If they're a first grader, right. The other piece I just wanna run by someone is the funding piece, because the money looks terrific. We all, no one could look into a crystal ball and tell you where the debt compromise was gonna end up at the federal level. Can we be assured that if we were to implement something like this, which would involve a lot of time and effort on your part and on the part of our staff, can we be assured that money's still gonna be there? And if the trigger gets pulled?
Well, we're looking at the revised, which is $500,000 approximately. That's a solid number. I mean, that's a good number. Unless the state and federal reimbursement changes, that's the number. It doesn't take any more staff in our kitchens to facilitate this.
Right, and I'm worried about the federal money. That's my concern. Because we don't really know what's going to happen with, I mean, with the budget in Washington necessarily, whether that stream will continue.
That's true, although, I mean, maybe this is naive of me, maybe it's wishful thinking, but with the Obama administration in place, it seems that nutrition is earmarked and rather stable. I don't know, but that's what I've been reading.
I hope so, yeah.
I hope so, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question, too. Well, first, I have a comment. I really like the idea of the students, of breakfast in the classroom. I really like the idea of students having a breakfast to start the day and making sure that all of our students are getting nutritional meals. But I have to say, I have some concerns about the implementation of it as well. When you say, you know, you comment that cleaning up spilled milk is a learning experience, and clearly that's true. But our teachers are already pressed to meet the state's standards. They're already, they have a very prescribed curriculum that they have to address. As a teacher myself, I know that if 15 minutes of my class period was taken away every single day for the duration of my semester, that would be a lot of instructional time for me. And I understand that it counts to the state as instructional minutes. But in terms of my getting through my curriculum, it takes away instructional minutes for me as the teacher. So that's a concern for me of how we will allow teachers to get through everything they need to get through. Now, the question that I have is totally on a separate subject, which is, what does happen for students who are on restricted diets? Students who have wheat allergies or...
That's a great question.
Dairy allergies, et cetera.
We would facilitate that, just like we do in the cafeterias now. And nutritionals are online. Breakfast and lunch is online nutritionally. So there's a couple of things that happen. Breakfast in the classroom doesn't mean that every kid has to eat their breakfast. It means that you're offered, and you eat it if you want to. And we claim who's eating, and we don't claim who's not. If there's a child that's on a restricted breakfast, and he doesn't wanna eat, or he's sent with something else to eat that's okay for him to eat, or she to eat, then so be it. But we're also a food service, full-service vendor for our district and for the classroom, and for our kids. So if we find that there's a restricted diet, we'd like to implement something that facilitates a healthier breakfast for that child. If he can't eat a bagel, but he can have eggs and ham, then we're gonna do that. If he needs it on a rice wrapper, or, you know, if he needs a quesadilla instead, we'll do that. We're doing that anyway. And that comes up anyway. But that is also the responsibility. And again, as Mr. Wheeler said, teachers don't wanna be mothers or fathers, and I understand that, too, but on the other hand, they do wanna be teachers. And if you know that your child is diabetic or prediabetic, and you have a student in your classroom that can't eat that kind of bagel, then you contact your food service administrator, which would be our department, and we would make sure that that child gets a delivered meal that's suitable for that child.
Well, I think probably like most of us, I love this idea, but I have some real concerns about imposing additional responsibilities on teachers. Mr. Heron?
Two things. Obviously, I think we all agree that a good breakfast makes a good child, makes a good student, and, you know, everything goes with it. But I'd be curious to know the facts as to, is there, how big is the need? Because in the Healthy Kids Survey for 5th graders, I can't remember exactly the number, but it's a very high percentage of students that have breakfast at home. So in 5th graders, elementary school, it's not a huge number of students that don't have breakfast, at least that claim they don't have breakfast.
Interestingly, though, what would that breakfast be, number one? Because if it's, you know, a schmoffel, or whatever they put into a toaster, and, you know, that's just burning to sugar, and by the time they get to their first class, they're gonna be hungry for some good protein and a solid piece of fruit.
Yeah, again, we don't know.
We don't.
That's an unknown. All I know is that 5th graders who answer that question say they have breakfast.
Right.
Again, is it a pop-up? What is it? So I think something like that. And I was happy to hear, it sounds like if I have a child who's a diabetic, I can sign a waiver and not have my child eat that food.
Or you send your child with, you know...
Their own.
Yeah.
So it's an issue. Are there any schools clamoring for this? Is there a pilot school, a test school, that we can work with the associations, try to work out something, so we'd have a pilot to see what, if there is...
McKinley is interested in doing a breakfast in the classroom.
It'd be interesting to get a school that would like to pilot it, that we can work with the teachers.
Well, Emilio Handel is willing. And Joanne Kane says down a breakfast in the classroom program.
Well, again, it might be familiar, but do the teachers wanna do it? And can we come to some agreement to... And can we come to some agreement to have it done as a test?
I would hope that the teachers want to do it.
Yeah. So, it'd be, it'd be interesting to have a pilot to see if all of the issues come forward that have been claimed might come forward.
I think that's a great idea. I think I'll call Emilio tomorrow and make sure he's still in.
Remember, there's a process we have to go through to...
Absolutely.
Okay. So, this will come back to us. I'm so, oh, oh, Ms. Lamone, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Well, and I just, I, I, I think actually my colleagues have said a lot of it. And the piece that's still a little unclear for me is the financial piece. I mean, I read the, the footer here that basically says that there's rarely an increase in the cost. But, I, I'm hearing from students and from staff and from parents that the trash issue is such a big issue at a lot of our schools anyway. I mean, you talk about maintenance. I visited one of our elementary schools and I asked second graders, what was the one thing they would change about schools? And second graders told me that they would change the trash, that they would have less trash at their school. So, I think of this and I'm going, oh, man, we can't, we don't have the capacity right now to do what we need to do. So, what would it be like? Do I project it's going to be, take up a chunk of the $500,000? Not necessarily. But it is a concern to me. And so, I would like to see that the, the next time this comes to us, we have some numbers of what we project it might cost. Having said that, I, I don't personally find any reason not to further explore this or to have these discussions. We're not going to have answers to our questions that we've all raised unless we actually begin to explore it. I think the pilot model is a great model because I, I do believe that a lot of really important issues have been raised and I, I think it, it makes sense to explore this and move forward.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry to cut us off. I'm going to, but I am going to cut us off on this discussion because it will be coming back to us.
Can I ask one question?
I'm sorry.
Robyn and I are dying to know what a schmoffel is.
Schmoffel. Yeah. It's one of those triangular things you stick into. I don't know what a schmoffel is.
Like a toaster waffle or something.
It's like a waffle thing, you know?
My new favorite word.
Okay. It's my word. It's a schmoffel. It's like a, yeah.
This will come back to us and we'll have an opportunity to get additional information and we can forward any additional concerns or questions that we have to Ms. Weiss to address. And hopefully, you'll have an opportunity to maybe talk to Lane or other representatives from SBTA. Mr. Wheeler has left the rooms at this point, but...
I, I would think that in our initial opener, we'll probably talk about a, a potential pilot and then some of the questions you have about implementation and are there unintended consequences, those will be answered through the pilot.
That would be, that would be great. I think, I think a pilot would be the way to go. So, thank you and we look forward to hearing more about this.
Good. Me, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We now need to return to several items on the consent agenda, starting with item D1, which, the minutes. Ms. Parker, I think you were the one who pulled, oh, Ms. Deacon.
Actually, I pulled it. I pulled it. And I, maybe this is what you caught, too. President Cordero, you are extremely accomplished, but you, but being both an attendant and present is...
I can be absent and present.
I don't know if you've quite pulled that one off yet.
Yeah.
So, that was, that was my one correction. That was the meeting of Friday, May, May the 13th.
It's the very first, very first page of the minutes.
Friday, May 13.
I am listed as both present and absent.
So, you were absent.
I was absent and so I wanted to pull it, not only to correct it, but also because I need to abstain from those minutes.
Present in spirit?
Present in spirit and absent in body.
I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the, the, do you want me to split this out or can we just vote on it and you can abstain from the whole piece?
That's okay.
Okay. I'll move to approve the minutes and item D1 as corrected.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain because I was not there for one of them. Okay. That, then our next item is item D4, D14, sorry. And I think...
This is one that I pulled.
Yeah, okay.
The reason I pulled it was just in looking for more information on the FICMAT proposal. When I looked at it, I saw that there were some consultants that were still to be determined and also my other concern was that there's not a timeline on it that's thoroughly laid out. I went and looked at other tech reviews that FICMAT has done. They do a very good job and what I saw was that most of their original study agreements had their consultants to be determined. They used, they chose high-quality people to come in and do it. But what I also saw was that most of their reviews took eight or nine months until the final report. I strongly think that we need to have a final report by March 1st, the latest, because we need to have this report as part of any discussion about a partial tax renewal in fall of 2012. And so, I would be willing to, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, understanding that you, you all may have some concerns that you want to, to adapt the motion, but I'm going to put it on the table, anyway, to approve a study agreement with the FICMAT team to perform a comprehensive review of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's technology function with the consideration that the final report must be completed by March 1st, 2012. And if they can't do that, then we would need to come back to it.
And I will second that.
I don't have a problem with that because I agree that we need to have that information. So, is there any further discussion on that?
Could I just make a quick comment about this, especially since Mrs. Parker raised the, the parcel tax issue? I just want to reiterate something that I've said in the past, which I want to make sure that we always think about the people, the tech support people, as well as just the equipment. Because in my experience as a teacher, quite often there was money for equipment and not for tech support. And one without the other does not work. So, I want to make sure that, that we're thinking in those terms as we, as we move forward on this and especially as we look at the parcel tax. I noticed that Peabody was using some of their parcel tax money for a tech support person and, and I thought, well, that's not a bad idea. Also, the security assessment, that was number five on the FICMAT report. It mentions a catastrophic event or security breach. I would also like them to look at preventative measures as well. Maybe that's folded in, but I just wanted to call that out. And that was my only comment.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. So, that brings us to item D21, which I think, Mr. Herron, I think you pulled that one?
Yes. Just real quick. When does the notification go out to the parents that would have this added, these added two items on it? It says annually to parents.
Actually, I believe it goes out in the annual notification to parents.
That's exactly what...
The beginning of the year.
That's my best guess.
And has that gone out yet?
I don't believe so.
No, it hasn't. And, well...
I'm just going to speak as a parent. You do it right, you know, that gets turned in usually the first week of school and secondary, it's turned in when you put in the, when you go in for your, to get the schedules. So, that's happening in about a week.
And I think what our practice has been is we kind of use an overnoticing, like we give a continuum or battery of things we might use even in the most extreme, but we never use that extreme a pesticide or herbicide, but we just cover ourselves.
Many of the...
It's reduced down in numbers to just, what, eight now? So, from a much higher number.
We're also trying to balance that with the, what is it, the Healthy Schools Act or I can't remember what it...
Okay. My only concern was that it goes out...
Which is a great act because it's...
It goes out this year and not annually, meaning a year from now if we're adding this.
No, it goes out at the beginning of the school year.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
I'll double check that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Item D22, that was also yours, Mr. Herron?
Yes, I pulled that mainly because two years ago, when we did this, we had a huge negative response to doing it. And our superintendent was out of the country, Dr. Cash. You might want to think about that. And the board president had to handle it during that time and...
And Mr. Smith.
Yeah, and Mr. Smith. That's right.
I still love my squirrel.
And I wanted to make sure that this was done, not as a consent item, but that we all understand what we're doing. It was interesting that three speakers voted in favor, which means to me that there must have been a concerted effort to get somebody here. But that same effort may not have been made to the people who were opposed three years ago and, and we still may hear from them. And I presume, no notification since we just approved it, that the parents at the two schools have not been notified with such a potential... I noticed in, in here, it says that the principals at, at two of the schools on those campuses that are currently in session have been notified. My question is, do we know if they've notified any of their staffs or any of their parents that 100 feet or 100 yards away, we're going to start poisoning, you know, squirrels? Do we know how far out the message has gone to parents that, at these two schools that are currently in operation?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
I, I mean, I guess it wouldn't be out yet until it's approved. However, I, I don't know, I guess Mr. Hetyank would know.
Yeah. If, if Locklear and the parents don't know it's happening, you know, it does concern me that we'd be, we do this...
But I don't think we're going to. Is there a timeline attached?
It's starting tomorrow.
Starting tomorrow.
Yeah, it starts tomorrow. And so, it concerns me that, that we're doing it and I want to make sure we all understand we're doing it and we're on, on the same page, that we're doing it and knowing full well there might be a backlash to it.
Yeah. And I think our practice is, is always to try and do it when students are not in session. And so, you're, you're faced with that difficult dilemma. How do you get a message out to the whitest possible, possible population when they're not in session, when you're purposely trying to do it when they're not in session?
My concern is really OAS and SBCA because they are, well, OAS is in session.
No, just, just the academy.
They're not in session? Just the academy's in session? Okay. That's right. Academy. So, they're in session, do their parents know that this is happening adjacent to where their children are going to school? So, just because the principal's been notified or the school's been notified, that doesn't mean to me that there's been a bulletin out to all the parents that's happening.
Mr. Herron, do you want to make a motion that would include stipulating that we notify the parents?
Especially at SBCA, yes.
Okay.
And maybe the principal's already done it. I don't know.
We'll follow up on that.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the item D22.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Item D23?
I pulled that one also, just with two questions. We had a comment earlier that carpets may not be the best thing to put down in the new portable. And so, I wonder if we have any thoughts on that, if, if a different flooring should be used, if carpeting does trend, tend to make it harder to get rid of mold or if it's, if we should be putting carpeting down in that temporary building.
Well, I'll say that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that because the decision that's made regarding that will impact, could have an impact on every single classroom in our district. So, I don't know that I would feel comfortable at this particular point saying to you or the board as a whole, there will be no carpet in that room because that may mean there will be no carpet in any room. I would want to consult the inhabitants of that room as to their input, specifically staff.
Well, this is the case where we have a choice at this moment to make that decision on one portable. And so, at least I'd like it looked into.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, it's, it's hard for me to accept the fact that if we say no on this one, that how many school, how many classrooms do we have that all of a sudden we've made a decision on all of them?
Well, the rationale for it, I mean, if, if the decision was not to install carpet, might carry true for any classroom in the district. So, that's, that would be the concern I would have and I would want to investigate it further.
Okay. And the other is...
Well, can, can we just include then that it will be investigated?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And the other is, it, it sounds like something that's impossible, but if every single book might be contaminated and we have to get rid of every book, I mean, how do we get across that issue? I mean, is there anybody that, as they, as they do this remediation, do they look at? And I know they found some books with mold in them, I know that, but have they...
I don't know the answer to that question.
I think we'll consult with Panacea on that.
Okay.
That, that would be my response.
Okay. I'll move for approval of item 23.
Okay. Second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Abstentions? Okay. Motion carries 4-0 with one abstention. Okay. That brings us to item D27. I believe that was also yours, Mr. Herron?
First, I'd like to thank Mrs. Kiyane for answering most of my questions. I mean, she, she did gather a lot of information and did, oh, you're here. Thank you. You answered a lot of them and most of them and not all exactly like I'd like to have seen them answered, but 99% were, were beautiful. There is one issue, there's a lot of issues. I mean, I, I could go on, on the financial reporting. I have tons of questions on that, but it's really not germane to this particular discussion. But, there's one paragraph. What, what item is this? I left my, I left my iPad and all my notes at home because my grandsons were playing games on it. It was down to 8%.
[laughing]
And by the time I plugged it in and left, I forgot all about it. Yeah. If you, if you look at term of agreement, on page two, item number one, it's my understanding historically, this was a 20-year potential document, a first five-year period with three potential options to renew. After five years, we renewed it for a second year. This is now the third time period that we're renewing it for five years. To me, that leaves one more five-year period to accomplish the 20 years. If I read this term, number one, to me, it, it's extending it 10 years beyond that. It says, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions hereof, this agreement shall remain in effect for a period of five years from the date hereof, which is the 9th of August, 11. for a period of five years from the date hereof, which is the 9th of August, 11. And the center has a right to extend this agreement for three additional five-year periods. That's another 15 years. So you take the 10 years we have, the five years now, that's 15, you add another 15, all of a sudden, we've got a 30-year agreement instead of the 20-year agreement that was originally made. And with, all the answers have been, it's a 20-year agreement. Mr. Hjank said 20 years was the intent. And I've got a amended motion for that paragraph I'd like to hand out, that in essence makes it very clear that this one, let me have one copy. There's one more five-year period after this. Now, if everybody up here agrees that we're gonna give them an additional 10 years or make it 30, you know, that's a different issue. But I want to make sure that five years from now, when maybe none of us are here, except Dr. Cash and Ms. Lamont, that they don't look at this paragraph and say, oh, we want to renew and keep it going for another, you know, 15 years. So I've just changed the language a little bit. Unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions hereof, this agreement shall remain in effect for a period of five years from the date hereof, and may be renewed after five years as may be agreed upon to in writing by the district and the center. That accomplishes the 20-year period that was originally established. And discussions can take place in five years if they want to then renew it for additional terms. But this amendment that I have, at least, makes it very clear what the agreement is that we have in place and that we've been operating under.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Deacon.
I believe Mr. Price helped draw this up. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, when I look at the agreement, I think the term of the agreement probably just held over from the first five years and was never changed. And so the intent is different because we're on a third phase or third series of five years. So I mean, I know Jerry Fawcett's in the, in the audience, and I don't know if she had a chance to look at this language yet. Have you looked at this yet?
I have. I guess I.
Ms. Fawcett, could you please come to the podium so that it can be picked up on the video?
Give her a copy of my amendment because she had not seen that.
And, and while she's coming up, I would actually like to say, I'm not averse to the 30-year term. I actually think the loop serves a great purpose. And I'm not sure why I would want to restrict it to the original 20 years unless there's some legal reason that we have to.
I would caution you on that relative to other MOUs we have with other agencies and the implications that might have.
Okay. Because I wasn't sure if this was a conscious decision to in fact extend it through this language or not.
I don't think so. I think it's just a drafting error that nobody caught.
And I just want to raise a question too, and then we'll, we'll hear from you, Ms. Fawcett, I'm sorry. Sure. That whether we want to delay a vote on this until we have input from Mr. Price. Because I would like to know the implication, the legal implications of both options.
I don't think it's a legal implication. I think it's a practice precedent-setting issue in relationship to agreements we have with other agencies as far as the five-year period.
You might be in a position of de facto giving other agencies 30-year terms when you really don't want to.
Okay.
Did I say that diplomatically enough?
Yes, you did. Ms. Fawcett?
It might be beneficial to have Craig Price weigh, weigh in on this. As the president of the CIPEC board, I can say to you that when we drew this agreement up back in 2001, when, I'm not sure exactly the date, we never looked at this as a 20-year agreement, boom, and then something was going to have to happen. In our minds, and perhaps this is the reason to be discussing this, this was at a joint-use agreement that was going to go on as long as it was working for everybody. And of course, the agreement allows CIPEC to opt out and it allows the district to opt out if things aren't working. So there was never in our minds any thought that at the end of 20 years, we would have to renegotiate, because we kind of renegotiate every five, which is kind of what we're doing now. So that's, that's kind of surprised to me that, that at 20 years, I mean, I look and see the loop going on for another 50. And I know you do too. But we need to make sure that protections are there for, for both parties here. That's why this has worked as well as it has, and that we've been so proud of this partnership. So I didn't have that, that in my mind, and I don't believe the board had that in their mind of, of CIPEC board, regarding this being a 20-year agreement, that it would be renewed every five, was the assumption.
Ms. Cordero?
I'm sorry, Ms. Parker, yes?
Two things. One, I would suggest, I think it would be great if there's not a need for this to be approved tonight, if we could do it at the next meeting on the consent.
We're six months past when it should have been renegotiated. So I think the sense of urgency may have passed.
It's kind of passed on.
So if we can get that clarified, just to be sure, I think that that would be great to have a, to include Mr. Price in the discussion. My language suggestion, a slight tweak on it, Mr. Herron, just to parallel what's in the existing agreement, would be that it says, instead of, right before that after, and maybe renewed after five years, instead it's and may be renewed for an additional five-year term, as may be agreed to in writing with the district and the center. That parallels what's there. Instead of saying three additional five-year periods, it's essentially an additional five-year, I guess, an additional five-year period is the, is the wording that I would use upon terms as may be agreed to by the district in writing. But I, I agree, I mean, it's ended up being that there's, there's, every five years, there's a negotiation. I don't think that there's any sense that this would end at the 20-year mark then. It's just that it makes it clear that every, it just.
Every five years, we get back together.
We're back together again. And, and, and I think that that's good.
I, I think, I think the renewal, I mean, obviously Jerry spoke to the fact that either could opt out, but I think the renewals there as a protection for subsequent boards in the event circumstances radically change. And so, I mean, I don't think anybody sees that on the horizon, but there has to be that protection.
Yeah, I guess that's my point, to continually, in essence, give 20 more years. That was never the intent from any documentation I've read. And every answer I've gotten, when I asked the question, other than the most recent one from, that we received today, this was the third year of a five-year agreement. Last, five years ago was the, was the, you know, the second.
This would be, this would be the second renewal.
Yeah. And it was, from day one, it was three renewals. And we were never 15 years ahead of time. And in essence, this, you know, and I don't know what future boards will want to do. I have no idea. But to tie the hands, the inference here from, is that there is another 15, another 20 years being asked for.
Except that it has to be renewed every five years.
But because it says that, burden, the burden become, is in your favor, not in our favor. And we own the property.
Okay, I'm gonna interject at this point. Given that we seem to have some disagreement over what the language actually means, whether we would in fact be instituting a precedent that we're not sure we want to set, what, what the actual original intent was, and what the opinion of the board is, because some board members seem to be in favor of extending the period, while other board members seem not to. I don't think this is an item that we can resolve tonight. So I'm gonna suggest that we bring it back to our next agenda, and that we get clarification on some of those issues, and perhaps an opinion from Mr. Price, so that we're better, we're in a better position to fully, to have a fuller discussion and make a decision. And that it not be returned to us on the consent agenda. Okay? Okay, so then we won't take action on that item. And we will return to the end of our agenda.
Can I ask one, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Does Mr. Price have any vested interest in this process? Is he on the board? Is he involved in it in any capacity?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
No, okay.
Okay. Okay, so back to coming events. I, do we have any coming events that need to be announced?
School starts.
School, school's starting. Okay, and then our next, oh, future agenda items, we gave you, I think we put a couple on the agenda already. We have a list of items coming up. And our next regular board meeting will be on Tuesday, August 23rd at 6:30 PM. So if there are no further, oh.
I actually just had, one thing, I've already talked to Dr. Cash about this. I would like to see proposal for the K-9 unit that we saw the demonstration for to come forward as, as a proposed, as an action item, or at least a discussion item. And I had a question about the other grand jury report, because we, we also were asked to respond to one about the post-employment benefits.
We're working on it.
You're working on it. Good. I just want, I know we saw the other one, so I just want to make sure. Is the new payroll system working well?
Julie, do you want to comment on the new payroll system?
Just thumbs up or thumbs down.
Yes or no?
Yeah.
I mean, given that, given that we did not run a dual or parallel payroll, I mean, we had very little.
Okay, we don't, we can't have a discussion on this. So we really just need to have a kind of, yes, it's working well, or no, it's not.
It is working. We had some minor problems, but right now we are up and running and everything's going pretty smoothly.
Great. Good to hear. Thank you.
Okay.
It wasn't a schmoffel.
I'd just like to wait.
Okay, Mr. Herron?
I'd like to make one correction to some comments I made earlier. Dr. Hayden did run my numbers on the truancy issue. And I grossly overestimated the savings. And that's why we have Dr. Hayden here. But it might be 50,000, it might be 100,000, but it's not 300,000.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we are going to adjourn the meeting.